This is Barbara Brendan as Chair of the Town of Farmington's Plan and Zoning Commission. I first of all would like to wish any of all of you attending a good new year in 2021 and hope that it is happy and healthy for all. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I'd like to have you join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
Which it stands, with nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Normally, we would have a call to order, but I'd like to announce at this point that both public hearings that are on the agenda for this evening have been, one has been withdrawn and one has been postponed. Elizabeth Wood has withdrawn on Spring Lane and 402 Farmington Avenue has postponed until the 22nd.
Twenty fifth, sorry, twenty fifth, twenty fifth is the next date, yeah.
January 25th, which is our next regular meeting. So we'll begin this evening with new business. The first item on the agenda is Kishore Reddy, a fence exception request to install fence greater than four feet in height at 6B Cheryl Drive.
Okay, Kishore, you're welcome to do, if you want to introduce yourself and then do a presentation. We can start with the visual and then I can do the photograph.
Excellent, thanks. Hi, my name is Kishore Reddy. I live at 6B Cheryl Drive, Farmington. So I'm planning to get a fence on the west side of my property. So, I mean, it's right next to Route 6 and the purpose of the fence is for privacy. And there is a walkway right next to that in between Route 6 and my property boundary on the west side. And my property ground level is at least two to three feet below Route 6 level. So my request here is to have a six-foot fence and the law is, I am right now allowed only for four feet. So I'm requesting an exception for six-foot fence. Yes, right at the cursor, yes.
In this area, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So to this, there's the row of trees, it's inside the row of trees, is that correct?
Yeah, between the row of trees and so the, so are you asking about the fence?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. And the next image, yeah, yeah.
It'd be down here roughly?
Yes, yes, white cursor, yes.
Where the cursor is, okay. Do you have anything else to add regarding this request?
I mean, the next image actually shows the elevation difference between the road and the property, so, yeah. Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
Before we go to commissioners, I'd like to have Shannon do a roll call, please.
Certainly. So we'll just real quick run through everybody alphabetically. Barbara Brenneman?
Present.
Patrick Carrier?
Present.
Mike Grabulis?
Present.
Matt Pogson?
Present.
Inez St. James?
Yeah.
Marcy Schwartz?
Present.
Scott Halsted?
Present.
John Weber? Okay, Keith Weber?
Here.
Okay, we'll take just a quick look to see if John is, he's showing on, but I'm not, I'm wondering, John, is that, are you on the phone? They're muted. Okay. Well, I'm not saying that doesn't, we've got quorum, so we can certainly.
Commissioners questions, we'll begin with Patrick.
Um, yeah, so on the slide that we see now, that fence is existing, correct?
Uh, no, that's not the fence on my property. Yes, it is existing, but not in my property.
Oh, I see, okay, so that, so that's on the neighbor's property there?
Yes, yeah, it's a six-foot fence in the neighbor's, it's an apartment complex.
I got you, okay, and so yours would look pretty much the same, right? Because it's kind of the same elevation, it's down kind of at the same height versus the road?
Yes, yes, it's the same level, yes, you're right.
Okay, yeah, that's it for me, I was just, was wondering what I was, that gives me a good visual there. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a southwest corner.
Thanks.
Mike Grabulis?
No questions.
Matt Pogson?
No questions.
Inez?
No questions.
Marcy?
Oh, she's saying no question. You want to unmute yourself, Marcy?
No questions, sorry.
There we go, no problem, thank you.
Scott?
No questions, thanks.
Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Did John show up? No.
And unfortunately, showing is logged in, but there's no audio or video, so we're going to have to pass for this evening.
Mr. Reddy, do you have anything else you'd like to add to your presentation?
Uh, no, no.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing it in.
Thank you, thanks.
We're going to move on to LT West Farms LLC, accept an application for special permit to office and medical office uses at 500 South Road. I believe the agenda has an error in the typing that says 50 South Road, that's incorrect. It's 500 South Road in a BR zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of February 8, 2001. May I have a hear, may I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to accept the application for special permit to office and medical office uses at 500 South Road, BR zone, and schedule public hearing on February 8, 2021. And the application, excuse me, is from LT West Farms LLC.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Marcy, I second, Marcy Schwartz.
Thank you, Marcy.
You're welcome.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Barbara, Shannon, we cannot hear you.
You can't hear us?
Oh, oh, just silent, okay, no one's talking, what's going on?
No, can you, you can't hear us?
And now I can hear you, but all of a sudden, we had a, we said aye and that was like, that's.
Inez, Inez, you're not crazy, that really did happen.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay.
We'll try again, we're on number three.
Do we want to vote on number one? I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Uh, we were going to go through and set these and go back.
Okay.
Eliza Panett, accept an application for special permit for personal service home business, which is dog grooming at 287 South Road in an R20 zone and schedule a public hearing with a hearing date, a recommended date of February 8, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Eliza Panett for special permit for personal service home business, specifically dog grooming, at 287 South Road, R20 zone, and schedule public hearing on February 8, 2021.
May I have a second, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz and I second.
Thank you, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four Highland Park Market, accept an application for waiver for sale of beer at 204 Main Street in a BR zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of February 8, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Highland Park Market for waiver for sale of beer at 204 Main Street, BR zone, and schedule public hearing on February 8, 2021.
May I have a second, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz, I second.
Thank you, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five Tracy Stefanik, accept an application for special permit to add fill in the ridgeline protection zone on Lot 8655 Pinnacle Ridge Road in an R40 zone and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of February 8, 2021. May I have a second, a motion, please?
This is Inez St. James. I make a motion to accept the application from Tracy Stefanik for special permit to add fill in the ridgeline protection zone on Lot 8655 Pinnacle Ridge Road, R40 zone, and schedule public hearing date of February 8, 2021.
Thank you, may I have a second?
This is Marcy Schwartz and I second.
Thank you, are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We'll go back to number one under new business, Kishore Reddy, fence exception request to install a fence greater than four feet in height at 6B Cheryl Drive.
This is Inez St. James. I make the motion to approve the application from Kishore Reddy for fence exception request to install a fence greater than four feet in height, I believe it was to install a fence six feet in height at 6B Cheryl Drive.
Is there a second to the motion, please?
This is Marcy Schwartz, I second the motion.
Thank you, conversation, Patrick?
Uh, no, I mean, just by looking at the other fence, it looks like it's, it's quite low, so you would almost still see right over it, so no, no other questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Matt?
No questions.
Inez?
No questions, I think it makes sense, I can see why a homeowner would want this and with the topography, it matches to the other one.
Thank you, Marcy?
No questions.
Scott?
No questions.
John, did John ever come in? No? Keith?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. There appears to be a motion and a second to approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reddy.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
We'll go to, we have no public hearings this evening, so we'll go immediately to planners report?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, I do have something for planners report. Uh, this is for Valley Fitness, which is located at 45 South Main Street in the Riverside Plaza. It's the same plaza that CVS is in and the fitness center is under new ownership and they are proposing 24/7 access to the gym. Uh, the owner slash gym manager is on the phone if there's questions that, you know, aren't self-evident here, but they do have staff hours, as I noted in the agenda review, from 7:30 a.m. to 8 p.m. Monday to Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 6 p.m. on Saturday, and 7:30 a.m. to 4 p.m. on Sunday. Uh, the access plan was submitted as part of the agenda review to everyone and they have done a fairly detailed job in how, in thought process as to how they plan on working access for this outside of the staff hours. It will be via key fob for members only, no one under 18, no guests permitted and limited access, so things like sauna or special fitness rooms will not be opened. It's just general gym access outside of staff hours. Uh, very similar to the process that's in place for Anytime Fitness, which is located over in the Post Office Square Plaza on the other side of town. So, uh, there is no, it's not getting bigger, there's no change in use, there's no change in parking demand. If anything, it spreads out the parking demand. So unless there's a concern or objection by the commission this evening, I intended to sign off on this use from an administrative standpoint.
Any of the commissioners have concerns? If you do, speak up now.
This is Marcy, I just have a question, it's a different setup than any time in the sense that you have to go in the building first and then go down to the basement. So has that building always been open 24 hours? Has there always been access to that building 24 hours? Or would that now give that building access? And is that sort of something that we need to be concerned about in terms of safety?
That is a good question. I know it's open later because that's where the bathrooms are that the restaurants use, but Caitlin, are you on the call?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Okay, could you answer that? Do you understand the question, that there's the actual, there's the building access?
I don't know currently the, if that door is always open, but I have gotten approval from the landlord to go forward with the 24/7 access if you all approve.
Okay, so obviously that'll be something that'll have to be confirmed with the landlord then.
There's a beauty shop inside there too.
Correct.
That accesses and the expansion of the restaurant, of the pizza, what's it called? People's Choice is expanding and one of their entrances is in the hallway too.
They're, um, correct, in the bathrooms, so the bathrooms for the facilities are down that hallway too, are in there. So that's why I think there's probably extended access in that area that is not necessarily related to the businesses, but.
My only concern is that it ought to be in writing from the landlord that the doors are going to be open 24/7 and I think the police department should be notified that it's open 24/7.
That's fair.
That's my only concern.
My concern is just that if somebody was loitering, you know, outside, once the restaurants close and the bathrooms, I assume, well, I don't assume, I, they probably don't get locked, you know, so, yeah, I agree. I think something from the landlord, at least, that sounds great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, this is Matt Pogson. Is there any sort of video surveillance of any sort in that area? Because if that area is kind of like the landlord's in charge of that area, I would think that, obviously, that's going to be their liability and whatnot, but I'd hate for that to, I think Marcy makes a great point about this, that shared area. Is there anything that, and I guess that's a question for the tenant currently. Is there any, any knowledge of any kind of surveillance in those hallways or in that area?
I don't know if there is any surveillance in that area. I'd have to ask the landlord that.
I think, I think that kind of would be a big important part to have in that, so that's all.
Okay. Now Caitlin, you make mention you're going to have surveillance camera, but just at your door, correct? And then in a few spaces in the gym facility?
Right, our video surveillance would just be covering the doorway, so down the stairs at that doorway and then throughout the gym.
Okay.
This is Inez St. James. Isn't McDonald's 24 hours?
What'd she say? Is McDonald's 24 hours?
I thought it was.
It is not. Nope.
At what time does it, okay, okay. I thought it, maybe it used to be, now it's not, but the, I was just thinking about like, when we're talking about surveillance or whatever, I just, I feel like there are always cars in the plaza, no matter what, but I have no concerns with the request.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Grabulis, those doors, I believe, are always open. Nobody locks those at the best of fuel.
Okay. Okay, well, we can certainly, as a follow-up, have Caitlin get certification from the landlord that he understands that this will be, so we have it in writing that her, this use will be 24/7, confirm that that main door is open from, from the landlord. Michael, thank you for your information and then we'll also make sure the police department's aware that it's now going to be a 24-hour activity. So those are, those are easy things to take care of.
Anything else in the planners report?
I do not have anything else in planners report.
This is getting to be the shortest meeting in history.
It may be.
We have some minutes to approve from the December 7th meeting, please.
Well, since we don't have anything to bring up, this is Matt Pogson, I kind of had a couple of things to ask for planners report if we, since we don't have too much on the agenda tonight.
Yes, that's fine, not at all.
One of which, we have a recent addition to our gas stations here in town and we have a few things changing on Farmington Avenue and I was just curious if that was something that's been brought to the attention already in the planning department and if that's something that's going to come up soon with the signage and whatnot that they're looking for possibly.
We have been in with that new owner, uh-huh.
And, and also the lights that are on the pole.
We're working on it.
Okay. Um, the other one was something that I've brought up with you in the past, Shannon, and I just kind of wanted to bring it to the commission at some point. I was hoping we were going to be in person at some point, but that's not happening. So I brought up this Collinsville Power Equipment truck several times and there's a truck on Brickyard Road currently that has signage on both sides of it. Um, it's a box truck, that truck has a very large sign on both sides and in the past, we had always regulated those types of trucks and counted them as signage. And in this case, I did ask, there was some enforcement that was at least followed through with and determined that the truck could not be moved to a different location during off-hours. Although, I will say, he has moved it whenever we've had a snowstorm and put it out in the back. But regardless, I'm curious if the commission or if the zoning office is going to follow through with continuing to enforce trucks like that? Is that a sign or are we not going to do that anymore? We're not looking at trucks anymore as signage? So that was something I wanted to bring up with the commission and just get a general feel for how everybody on the commission felt about that.
I'll start some conversation, Matt. Uh, this is Barbara. In the past, we have made connection and made people who had similar trucks parked in residential zones. I think we had one over on Fenneman Road that was parking his truck in the middle of his front yard or vehicle, it wasn't a truck, it was a vehicle, and it was plastered with business labels. I had the sense that we were looking at more residential issues. I know years ago, we had one in Unionville with the vacuum cleaner company that used to park their truck up on, right on Farmington Avenue in Unionville and that one got moved and I think we made, Yumi moved their truck. Didn't Yumi park on South Main Street? And there was some complaining about whether that was a sign or not. So there are some issues like that, Matt. So it's up to the commission to listen to the issue, go look at the issue and come back with some conversation as to how you feel about it. I think most of the issues that I recall that we actually acted on were similar to this, but one of the main ones that we were concerned about was labeled vehicles parking in residential neighborhoods and not going to work, just leaving the truck parked there all week long so that everybody knew that that person was in such and such a business. So it's probably something that the commissioners should ride by. Shannon, have we, we haven't had this on the agenda, have we not?
No.
We've talked, I know Matt has talked about it in the past.
Uh, Matt brought it to our attention and we have been out, Bruce spoke with the owner. Uh, Russ has called the owner, I don't know if he actually connected. I stopped out and spoke with the owner and he did, and I'm not up and down Brickyard Road on a regular basis, but he did move it back. I asked that if he's not, so the way the regulation is worded is that it can't, the sole purpose of the vehicle can't be for signage.
Right.
And the owner has been adamant that he uses it for deliveries and it's not very clear as to how frequent deliveries are made and the regulation isn't, it doesn't specify the frequency of deliveries. So he did move it back, but he is a lease tenant on that property and we checked with the, the main owner, I believe it's Forbes Asphalt and Forbes confirmed that he's a lease tenant and has a specific lease area that he has access to. So, so that, those are the items that we, and actions we have taken to date.
I think it's a conversation that the commissioners need to have and obviously, the department has been making an effort. And I think, you know, go out and ride by it and take a look at it and we'll talk about it at the next meeting.
Thank you, Barbara, thank you, I appreciate that.
Can do.
Thank you.
What is the, what is the exact address or this sort of, I don't, I don't know exactly where you.
Uh, it's on Brickyard, it's on Brickyard Road, north of Dunning, on the same side. So as you're heading north on Brickyard Road from Route 4, it's on the right-hand side before you get to the bike path crossing.
Okay, all right, I'll head down there, thank you.
Of course.
Anything else, Matt?
No, I, I do know that we have a few temporary signs that are starting to become kind of permanent up at Farmington Valley Equipment, that's one of them. But I, I think that there's so much going on with COVID right now, I've just been kind of keeping my mouth shut about it until that passes. I don't know when that's going to be, but I know that there's a lot of flux because of all of it. But other than that, I wouldn't mind hearing something about our possible town planner. I know that was on the town council agenda. It would be nice to hear something, if there's anything to share at all.
Um, other than what's on the town council agenda, that's all there is to share at the moment. So that they're close to making a decision and finalizing. Um, there's some paperwork items that, that need to be finished. It's entirely possible that introductions could be made at the next meeting, but that's all I'm at liberty to share at the moment.
Okay, thank you. No, that, that's it, but thank you for giving me some time, I appreciate it.
Of course.
Anybody else have anything they want to talk about while we have the opportunity? It looks like we won't have an opportunity at the next meeting.
No, the next meeting will be busy, folks, and if there's any questions between now and then, um, yeah, I certainly, I sent the agenda review. I know the package of information that was sent out was fairly detailed and lots of attachments. So if there's any questions, please feel free to reach out. I'm happy to make sure that you at least understand what's in front of you so that you can have a productive meeting at the next, on January 25th.
If there's nothing else, you are adjourned.
Well, let me make, wait, let me make a motion for the minutes.
Wait, 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 yeah, minute.
We have a motion.
No, we, we.
Oh, that's right, Matt.
We jumped in with other things.
All right, let's have a motion for the minutes of December 7, please.
It's Inez St. James, I make the motion to approve the minutes of December 7, 2020 Town Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Is there a second?
Marcy Schwartz, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries, now you are adjourned. For being.